Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 6th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of all the exits around the room in case of emergency. And I'll join us as we salute the American flag.
(Inaudible) to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing. This is for Carriage Trail, well, Crofton News, formerly known as Carriage Trail. This is a request for an extension of site plan deadlines to start, to continue substantial construction, put it that way. Make it a motion, open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or abstentions? Motion carries. Mr. Crofton, do you want to add anything?
Good evening, this is the board. So equally important to me was to see how-
I'm sorry, I'm already having trouble with the blow-
Oh, I'm sorry. How's that?
Thank you.
So equally important to me is, what I think I'm getting some good news, was your reaction to my request to update the SEACER. So, but I'll let the board talk. If they have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you. I'll start with the consultants. Ms. Moss, any comments? Because Ms. Franson is still trying to pull it together here. Sorry. Everyone's back from summer vacation, it seems like, and a little loggy today, perhaps. So, Ms. Franson, we have a very extensive memo from you. It's almost like a matrix, where you go through and talk about the originals, the changes that have gone along the way, and current changes now. The current changes now are based on revisions required for landings turtle mitigation measures, but that also impacts some other things, too. We also know that there's going to be an open span bridge, so you talked about the HECCRAZ data that's still necessary from DEC, et cetera. So, let me go over to you.
Right, well, so, the planning board and the applicant have, and really the focus of this, is the amended finding statement. I think everyone's agreed that, given the reduction in the number of units and the fact that the layout is pretty much staying the same, that it made sense to take the approach of pursuing this amended finding statement rather than having to go down a different path. And that was also based on the fact that we're going to leave the sewer limits at where they will be, not considering any additional, you know, flow and expanded wastewater treatment plant, so we won't get into opening doors to, like, growth-inducing aspects. So, there are some open items which you're working through. One was the HECCRAZ, which Pete and Tad-
We've talked about it before.
Okay. And so, some of the information was, information that DEC was actually looking for to get some kind of sense from the town if they were okay. Because the town is going to be acting upon and reviewing, for instance, a floodplain development permit. Well, if they have any changes in any way to design, it then influences, I guess, those areas that they're trying to protect and preserve related to the landings turtle habitat. So, everything's somewhat interrelated, and that's why this is sort of a little bit of an iterative process, to make sure that you've submitted sufficient information for the town to feel that, okay, any potential impacts have been disclosed, and where they've changed are reflected in the amended finding statement. And then eventually DEC can, you know, feel comfortable with issuing a permit. I think the other area is DOT. And so, you did provide us some feedback in terms of where you think that is at this point in time, but I believe that's still in process, that there's some feasibility analyses being done, so that you can figure out how much right-of-way you need, whether you can accommodate it, you know, because of the constraints of the house on the one side and then the creek on the other side. And so, it's a little bit of a balancing act, so that needs to get reflected in the amended finding statement. And, you know, at least at this point in time, I'm going to incorporate what you had indicated was the path that DOT thinks that you're on, but I think ultimately we just want some kind of email from them that confirms, yes, you know, this is where we are. So, I think, from my perspective, we're very close. I just think we need to get a little farther in terms of a couple of these analyses, so that the town can sign off on, not that they're signing off on a permit or that they need to issue it, et cetera, but just that we can say, okay, we have sufficient information to be comfortable issuing an amended finding statement. If that makes sense.
So far, it does.
Okay. So, that's where we are, and I think for this evening, if the planning board has any additional information they think needs to get incorporated into the draft finding statement, you know, to let us know this evening, or if you think of anything while we're also going through the rest of this review process with the other agencies. But, again, we just want to bring it up to date as much as possible, so that the planning board can then act on it.
Did you want me to comment on what she said? So far away from-
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so, I did respond somewhat today on the DOT situation, but let me just elaborate a little. So, we met with DEC and DOT, and DEC didn't just out of hand say, no, we don't want to hear about any changes to the side with the embankment on it, you know, the side, the southbound lane area. They wanted to see, you know, they wanted to see what's the plan. And our intention is to try and stay with the edge of pavement on the southbound side and extend it, whatever widening is required, on the northbound side, on the east side. And, you know, there's a little, there's mindful of the front yard of the house next door, and whether that's in the right-of-way completely. So, we're finding that out now, and I have my survey, he'll go out and do some shooting, and he's gonna, you know, we're gonna see if a plan can be provided that avoids much more work on the southbound side. One of the things in the original approved plans was significant encroachment on the southbound side with a wall and all of this. That's what I'm trying to avoid in that event. That would be, again, less impactful in the environment. If we had to go with some similar design to what has already been approved, that would be no more impactful than is already approved. So, I don't know that, you know, I'm hoping we can get a better plan with DOT. They've already, in my conversation with them, they've already said, okay, well, you don't have to have a max, a minimum of 40 feet widening with all the lanes. They're ready to reduce the requirements, like a smaller shoulder, a smaller left turn lane. So, they're, they seem to be a little more amenable to working with us. And, you know, and of course, the DEC is on guard to the turtles, they have to, so, you know, at this point, I don't want to give over the whole property to them, so I'm trying to avoid that. But, so that's where we're going with DOT, and I think it's going in the right direction, and so I will report back. As to the HECCRAZ, I was getting it, and then this came up with DOT, and now I've asked my engineer, I said, well, if I have to change what's going on on that embankment, would that affect the waterway? And he goes, maybe, but maybe it would, you know, maybe not, but maybe. In which case, the HECCRAZ would, I'd have to do a third one. So, that was like, oh, my god. So, it's delaying, needless to say, frustrating to me, but I want to get it right. So, I'm hoping I will have sufficient information by the next meeting, I guess, to maybe see it through the board, to see their way clear, to advise DEC that, yes, as proposed, we believe that the findings do encompass the new plan. So, we'll see where we go with that. And I'm trying to address body's concerns until then, and so that's where I'm at.
Mr. Sotero may bring this up, but we also had, in our agenda meeting, that the floodplain analysis, that you weren't using current data from FEMA, that was 2012 data. Am I correct?
Well, that is, that is, you know, the data that they are supposed to be using, and I don't remember, I'm going, as you and I talked about earlier, you know, you sent us, I don't remember if the HECCRAZ was, I think it was, in that information that you sent me, you know, the package-
Oh, yeah, that, there was a HECCRAZ, but when we were trying to get a culvert bridge.
FEMA, FEMA came through in 2012 and did an update of the floodplain, not only in Hyde Park, but, you know, throughout the county. So, and Tad and I had advised your engineer that that's, you know, the data that has to be used, because I believe the original HECCRAZ that was done when Rhodey, Soika, and Andrews did the bridge, well, that was obviously, obviously before 2012. So, I don't remember whether Dominic had updated the HECCRAZ to 2012 yet, or if he's working on it. That's part of what I promised you, that next week I would get into, to see where we were with that. So, you know, as part of, as part of the SEACER analysis that, you know, we're looking at, you know, the HECCRAZ has to be done, and it has to, it has to show that you're having minimal, if, if any, impact on, you know, the floodplain, whether it be the waterway opening of the new bridge, or, you know, depending on any widening or fill from the DOT improvements, like you talked about before. So, you know, I think we can get through, you know, the SEACER, because, you know, there can't be any impact to the floodplain, or minimal, where it's not gonna, where it's not gonna cause any kind of a downstream-like impact. So, I think from a SEACER standpoint, that we'd be all right there. And so, I think that was it, as far as, you know, the floodplain goes.
In case there's anyone interested in watching this over television, can you explain what HECCRAZ means? We've said so many times just now that I realize we probably haven't ever tried to explain what that-
You mean to tell me not everybody knows what HECCRAZ is?
Really?
Well, I'm gonna try to give you a short, but HECCRAZ is a very, it's a, it's a detailed floodplain program that, you know, not all of us engineers, you know, like, do, you know, and understand. We have a few people in our big, like, CPL, you know, like, world that are able, you know, to do that. When we own Morris, or, when we, when I owned Morris Associates, you know, we did not have, you know, the capability to do that. We would hire somebody that knew how to do that. So, basically, what that is, is you have to, you have to have cross-sections of, in this instance, the Cromelbo Creek, which the cross-sections are, like, supplied by FEMA. You may have to augment them with some ground survey, but you have to have cross-sections both upstream and then downstream of whatever structure that you're analyzing. And then you have to put in, you have to put in, you know, a flood, let's say, into, you know, the program. And I don't know exactly how it works, because I have never done a HECCRAZ. I mean, I don't even like to review them. I have, you know, other people, because I just don't know. I haven't, like, done enough of them. So, but you put, you put the particular flow into the program, and you see how it spreads out over, you know, the cross-sections that you have every, I don't know, 100 feet or so, 200 feet, and you see how, like, it spreads out, what elevation that it comes up to. And FEMA, FEMA sets, like, an elevation for any, any particular, you know, area of, you know, the stream, in this case, to have a set, you know, elevation that the 100-year, like, flood is. So, the applicant, when they're sizing a bridge, has to make sure that they're not, like, exceeding that, and that's what, that's what the HECCRAZ, so the HECCRAZ is an engineering program that determines floodplain elevations. Now, like, in this case, one would think, well, wait a minute, they're taking out whatever there are four, you know, like, culverts there. So, you would think, nah, that's not gonna be a problem, they're gonna put in this big open span. Well, that's okay for upstream, but then you gotta worry about-
Downstream.
What's gonna happen downstream? So, it's kind of, so it's kind of a balancing act. So, you have to look at, okay, what size opening am I gonna have that'll, that'll keep the upstream where it's at, but also not, not cause any kind of damage-
Completely inundate downstream.
Downstream.
So, my layman's explanation for you was going to be that it's a modeling program.
Why did you just say that from the beginning?
I wanted to hear the engineers' versions.
Let me-
Well, I don't get very technical, you know that.
I have two observations here. First is, that's an acronym for-
There you go.
Hydraulic-
Yep.
Engineering Centers River Analysis System.
System.
So, that kind of shortens up that whole definition.
I know Pete around the bush.
Yeah. The other, the other-
Because I didn't really know where all-
The other observation is that I suspect Pete is of Italian origin, because he was-
I use my hands a lot, yes, correct.
So, that's my two observations. Anyway-
I actually looked it up, that's the reason why I knew what it was, and it's a modeling program, basically, so that you don't have the risk of, basically, washing away a bridge with something, new structures put in there. And you also want to balance between upstream, because upstream flows more quickly down than what, that just means it winds up faster downstream. So, it's definitely a balancing program, and I don't blame you for not wanting to read, because just the 20 minutes I took reading, after a while, I was like, okay, this is too dry for me.
Yeah, I had no interest, I just call, like, somebody else and say-
HECCRAZ expert, come on down.
Hey, yeah, here's one, look at it.
At any rate, it's, it's, we want to make sure that the data that you're inputting for the modeling is accurate, that's all.
So, Michael, I would just add, so, all of this information that we're asking is flowing from the DEC's notice of incomplete application. So, this isn't, these aren't studies that we're asking for in addition, this is really information that they're asking for, so they can issue their permits.
So, actually, Bonnie, this-
We just want to incorporate that.
That was Tad's first request, because in order for her to issue a floodplain development permit, she wanted a HECCRAZ, which Pete agreed with. And my only confusion about that whole explanation was, is that in 2012, the roads were already filled in, you know, to some degree, and I don't think it's reflected. You know, there's a road just past the bridge, you know, by the Moose Lodge, that is a depression, and then there's the access road into the sewer treatment plant, which also was filled in. So, in fact, the only area that we're going to impact on, in the floodplain, is the outflow line from the sewer treatment plant, which is temporary, because ultimately, once the pipe is in, it would, you know, go back to its original condition. But that is something that I'll have to deal with.
Well, see, that's where, so that's where Dominic would look at, okay, what, what has changed since 2012? I may need to send our surveyors out to get some additional information for those particular spots that you just mentioned.
Right. So, you know, I believe that those spots were already filled in in 2012, but-
We're gonna have a discussion next week.
Eventually, I will own it as long as the previous owner, so whatever.
Eventually, yes, but you're not quite there yet, I promise.
No, not yet, and I'm hoping to have it built by then.
Any other comments, Mr. Sotero? Any comments? Ms. Polidoro, except that you're not really Ms. Polidoro tonight.
No comment.
Thank you. Let me start to the left. Mr. Beath, any comments?
No comments. Bonnie, you did an excellent job.
Yeah, it was really thorough, really, truly thorough.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Waters?
Nope. Second what Don just said.
Ms. Wasser?
Same, no comments. Thank you for that great memo.
Vice Chair?
Ditto.
Vice Chair?
Ditto.
Mr. Gertrude?
No comment.
Okay. We're gonna be chipping dale, so I'll say, thank you very much, as well. I'm dating myself, I realize. Nobody knows what that chipmunks were anymore. You do, too, but we're the same age. At any rate, the other issue I had is that, it's not really an issue, I just wanted to point out that in the original approval, you had apparently two exit lanes, so you could go left or right, or north or southbound, and DOT is not limited, they're now, they're now limiting that. The letter we received from them, DOT, dated July 27th, they're very clear that the main driveway access indicated two exiting lanes on the 9G. Unless the intersection is signalized, traffic and safety is refraining from permitting dual exit lanes. Adjacent exiting vehicles compete for sightlines, so, which is true without a light, they could, it's, it's too confusing, and particularly in that spot. So, and also then, just for my colleagues, the newer ones who haven't been involved with this project, they're a whole lifetime on the planning board, like us. The house across the way from the planned exit, or, it's already now, for the Moose Lodge, the front lawn would wind up mostly disappearing, because it's in DOT right-of-way through, had to widen just that direction. So, that's, that's the concern, that they discussed it, too, it's that they're point three to limit the impact of the house on the east side of Route 9G. Please investigate expanding a portion of the widening on the west side of 9G. That's what you're doing. And the original approval did have a lot of improvements, we'll call them, in terms of clearing the bridge for the right-turn lanes. I think that that's why DEC probably greeted you with what they, the way they greeted you with, there's not a no, absolute no, because something that was approved there beforehand. But, information has changed, too, because the floodplain, things have changed with wetlands, the floodplain, et cetera, so that's why this has to be reanalyzed and through here. So-
Was that, that's, was that, that was an un-signalized intersection, right?
Right.
Okay, that's what I thought.
But they permitted it back then.
Yeah.
They're just not going to know.
They're not, they're not insisting on a no. They're just saying, you know, they want, you know, if I'm gonna, they want a left-turn lane now. They don't, they want people to navigate it without it.
The left-turn lane is warranted based on the traffic impact or traffic numbers you have, but it's not, the actual signal's not warranted. That's, that's the issue.
Right. The only thing I noticed today, I was out there, and I believe the property just may have just transferred, sold. And now I see a statue of the Virgin Mary by the door, so, uh-oh.
Uh-oh. Okay, we'll move past that one. When would, when do you want the board and consultants, when do you want to adjourn this to? To the next meeting, or do you want to wait till the October meeting? That's up to kind of you, but do you-
Yeah, I think, when do you think you'll have some study?
Well, I'm trying very hard to have something by the next meeting, or at least sufficient information for maybe the board to see its way clear, because I don't know what's gonna come first, the chicken or the egg, is the DEC, or, you know, so.
I think, I've had that question, too, in my head, but in speaking to Ms. Franson, Bonnie and I, we think, we want to get to the point where we have enough information that we can then push it back to the DEC. And we think we're close enough, but we don't quite have it all in there yet. And if there's any changes from the HECCRAZ, because that's a faster way of saying it, that may impact any of the other mitigations toward landings, or whatever other changes might happen. Go ahead.
So, I think just sufficient, again, because DEC's own, you know, incompleteness letter talks about wanting to see a floodplain development permit from the town, or just sufficient information to know that, right? So, I think just enough so that Tad and Pete have the ability to review it and say, okay, you know, this seems sufficient to be able to, we can, at some point, issue a floodplain development permit. The other thing was, did Mr. Nowicki follow up with the Army Corps? Because I know-
We don't have-
There was a flurry of emails, but I don't, I don't think he finally responded, I'm good to go.
Oh, you know Mike Nowicki, do you? Yeah, I, you know, I reached out to him again today, and I said, I'm going there tonight. What's the answer? So, he said, oh, I'll, I'll be working on it tomorrow. So, could we put this off till October, and hopefully I'll have sufficient information for you?
Because we'll have a lot of, we'll have some things to go through. So, make it a motion to adjourn this to October the, I think it's 4th.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. We'll see you guys in a bit. Enjoy the rest, the last of summer, because by October, we're back into fall, officially.
I think I have another thing on, so.
You do, that's right. Thank you.
Wish me well afterwards.
Next item on the agenda is Bellfield Phase II subdivision, which we have a revised plat with a list of easements. Cassandra and Victoria have listed, made comments on the easement list, et cetera, so I'll call on you a little bit later on, but in the meantime, make it a motion to reopen the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or abstentions?
Nope.
Carries? So, a few things have changed since the last time we saw the plans.
Thank you very much. Larry Boudreau with Bellfield. I have Tom Mulroy with me here tonight, and when we come up for Phase 2A, we'll have Mike McCormick with LMB, and Matthew Tether will be here as well, along with the developer, Mike Almoda-Zi. Okay, so, to assist in the review of the plat, so this plat exists, currently exists on record as a three-lot subdivision, you know, the sponsor has Lot 1, Lot 2 is a hotel, and Lot 3 is a wastewater treatment plant. We're coming in, we're adding Lots 4, 5, 6, and 7. Lots 4 will be the master HOA. So, we are working with an HOA attorney who advised us on the language to put in in the easement description, so we added that in there. Victoria asked that we help out, make it more clear with the easements, and then we decided also to color-code it to help code the chart to this, because there's a lot-
Which was much easier to follow, I promise.
A lot going on, a lot going on. So, we're here to answer any questions.
Let's start with consultants, then. Ms. Franson, any comments or questions?
Not this time.
Ms. Moss?
This is preliminary subdivision?
Yes.
And it's three sheets, right?
Yes.
Come on up. Maybe there's an other one.
I think we went over the drawings, like, last week or the other day, and they were resubmitted. A lot of the changes have been made and incorporated, so they're in much better shape than they were. I think there's still a couple of things that I need to better understand. One of the things that I always look for in subdivisions is the monuments, and I don't see any new monuments proposed for the lots. There was some language about the townhouse lots in one of the, I think it was in a, in a key that talked about a non-property boundary, or a non-binding boundary, or a non-something boundary, as one of the property lines, and I didn't understand that.
Okay.
So, there's a couple of things that I don't understand that I, that I'd still like to work through.
Okay, if, if you want me to come on up, or-
We're meeting with Chris tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow, one, I, yeah, so, I could come in, crash?
Come on, come on down.
Okay, I might bring Tom with me.
No, no, no. I like when you say, can I come in and crash? It makes it sound like you're gonna bring 45s and, you know, roll your hair with poodle skirts or something.
Like you want a 45.
Yeah. It'll be, it's a 45, oops.
Okay.
What's a poodle skirt? What's rolling your hair? Sorry. Think of grease. Anyway, you guys can work that through. But Ted, the, the plans that you, that we first reviewed, you and Cynthia and I, these are much better. I, I've looked and I, because I marked up mine where the errors were, and a bunch of them are gone now, so thank you. And I think that meeting with Chris certainly helps. Mr. Sotero, any comments? Any comments, legal comments? Yes.
Yeah, I had a, I had a couple of questions that we internally circulated that we will circulate to you-
Okay.
-after the meeting, but just for you to get a sense, a big one was kind of connections to Lot 4. For example, you have the HOA go across to Lot 4, but you don't add the new lots 5, 6, and 7. So, we just need to make sure that when those lots are made, the access is still retained, and it goes from Lot 4, 1, across completely. Another, there's specific comments such as, what is the master common area? It's not defined, which you may still be working out with your attorney.
Right, so it's not, it's, it is Lot 4, and you just want us to define what's in Lot 4?
Yeah, if you could define that as Lot 4.
Okay.
I was unaware that that was what it was defined as. There's other ones, such as, we need just confirmation that what's to be conveyed is for, like, lots 5 and 6 and 7, such as the sanitary sewer, which is on 1, 2, 3, and 4, but you don't have anything for 5, 6, and 7. Once they're created, we would just want to make sure that, again- Once they're created, we would just want to make sure that, again, it's being create, it's staying when the lots are created. There's, and then a couple of other questions. I couldn't find the pedestrian access, doesn't cross completely. We weren't sure what the, what the intention was for the Hudson Gas and Electric Utilities Easement. It's unclear exactly what that's intended for, since it's going to Lot 4, but Lot 4 is the master common area, so why would you need electricity? So we'll circulate these comments.
Right. That's fine, we'll respond to them, but Lot 4 serves as a corridor for pedestrian vehicular and utilities. And so, although not on the plat itself, Central Hudson will not define, you know, they define their easement in a, you know, written easement, which they themselves then record against the property. I am going to get you copies of what currently is on there. I can do that, but.
That would also be really helpful.
Yeah.
That was one of the questions that we were asking, is can we see what's kind of?
Send the comments and we'll get them turned around.
Thank you. Let me start to my right this time. Mr. Vith, any comments?
This is just on the, Mr. Vith. Mr. Gertie, sorry. It's been a long summer, a lot of hot day.
I have no comments.
Mr. Oliver?
Hotel's looking great.
Thank you.
That's all, thank you.
Ms. Dexter?
I was just curious about the setback that you noted on the map, that it went from 250 down to 150 along Dorsey.
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm guessing your work since that comment has kind of worked that out, or no? Okay. Because that's what we, that was, that's what was approved for the preliminary concept, right?
Yeah. I mean, well, that's, that goes back to.
It goes way back, yeah.
Yeah, goes way back.
Yeah, way back.
Anything else?
I'm sorry, what's, what's the question on it?
Well, I'm, I'm just, you know, it, it has wandered and it's changed, and I, I think that we need to understand the logic and the reasoning and what that does.
The easement along Dorsey on the original plat is shown in a different location than it is on this plat. When the concept development plan was amended, that general easement location.
Are you referring to the setback?
The setback.
Right.
From the, it's maintained the 250 up Dorsey, and then it went at an angle near the townhomes, and then it went up.
Right.
Now, there's just this little space down at the corner where it's 250, and then it immediately goes over to 150, and then it goes straight up. So I'm not sure, you know, whether, I don't remember that being discussed. I don't know what the positions are, so.
The discussion was, if you'd like me to remember, to recall, there was sort of an arbitrary area that they had drawn the line in the final development plan and the approved concept plan both. So, because it wasn't ever defined, it's almost like an easement or like a conservation easement or something, it wasn't defined, so you guys kind of arbitrarily, they told us, took it all the way up and then shrunk it down once it was, I think, past that side access road, down to 150. So, that's what was approved. What you're proposing now is not approved, to shrink it further all the way down.
All right, I'll have to look at it. I don't.
But that, that, it was admitted that it was kind of arbitrary, because there wasn't any.
Right. There's no.
Direction. In the original, I was going to say, in the 2006 approved plan, it wasn't ever defined as a line that was consistent throughout, so, and I think the reason why you justified it, and when I say arbitrary, I mean you just kind of said, okay, this is where we're going to do it. It wasn't that it was random.
Right.
But that because the roadway was in through there, that that, that would somehow mean that there was not development, but disturbance, and so therefore that's because it was not designed to be 250 all the way up, that that would be kind of demarcation.
It seemed like the road in the Crescent area.
Goes into that area.
Is what shrunk it down to the 150.
But that's only at the top. The bottom, all the way down was 250.
Was 250.
Yep.
And the other thing I think you should understand, Larry, is that the furthest south building is most likely in Fairview Fire District.
You're, you're correct here. I do see what you're talking about. That right there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Fire district lines should be shown in the plat?
Goes up here.
Yeah, the fire district line should be shown, and you may be surprised at your tax assessment if you're in Fairview.
Yes. Ooh.
Just saying.
Just saying.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Let me repeat it for you.
There's a fire district line.
Yes, I, I'm aware.
And Fairview fire taxes are significantly higher, and a portion of that building is in Fairview.
Correct. Yep, yep, we know.
We're just warning you about your Fairview fire tax.
We know, we know, we're going to meet with them.
Anything else, Anne?
No, I guess I would just say, please read Tad's letter.
I, I.
I sent it to them. Oh, you didn't? Oh, okay, that's why.
It's just to us preliminary.
But this, this I can fix tomorrow. I, I see exactly what you're talking about.
This is just to us internally so far, that's why.
Gotcha, okay.
So, Tad, are you going to issue, do you think those as separate comments to the applicant? Or do you want Bonnie to incorporate those into any that she's going to submit?
Well, I think the board needs to decide if they're something that, you know, if the applicant is already aware that that part of that building is in Fairview and they don't mind, it'd just be nice to see the Fairview line somewhere.
We can, we can add it.
On the plat.
What I, what I liked, to be honest, was that how you did kind of, you talked about the matrix, how it was this, and now it, now it has done this. And, and it was like, oh, okay, yeah, which you would, I mean, it happens, right? As you're going from 2006 to a preliminary concept, to an amended concept, and now we're here, things are going to shift and change. So, I mean, it was just a really nice kind of detailing of those, of those differences, so.
Okay.
Thank you. And Ms. Wasser, any comments?
Well, Tad, you also mentioned in your internal note about screening of the building.
Right, I, I.
Could you elaborate on that for the applicant, since?
I have not submitted that to the applicant. If it's important to the board, then I think you should, I would like to see.
I'd be curious, I'd like to understand it better.
I would like to see the corners of those lots or buildings staked, so that you can go out and see the proximity to the street and see if that, if any screening needs to be added in that setback, because I know trees were taken down because they were damaged and diseased and.
I would like to see that.
So it may be more open than we're thinking, and, and those buildings are going to be tall from the back.
That's fine, we can, we can do that, and the board can come out, take a look at it.
I think the landscape plan has been beefed up a little bit from the last one on the Phase 2A.
Mm-hmm.
And there were some evergreen trees that were planted around that corner.
I'm not automatically requesting screening, I just want to make sure that we understand it.
We can do a site walk, if we could just take out that.
That's, that's a fair question, as you travel along West Dorsey, so we'll get them staked and come out and take a look. While you're there, we'll show you the hotel.
And.
Oh, that's, that's a date.
Actually, that's, that's actually very good.
Yeah.
And as an aside, Tom, DCC will be contacting you about setting up a walk for David Kimmel, all that stuff.
For the what?
For David Kimmel and all that, yeah. I won't be there because I have to recuse myself from this portion, if it comes before us anyway, based on my being a trustee at DCC, so I just wanted to let you know.
Send your pictures.
Anything else you want to bring up?
No, that was it, thank you.
Mr. Waters?
Nothing at this time.
And now, Mr. Vith.
No comment.
What?
We're just happy.
So, I don't really have any additional comments either, because this is, this is subdivision, it's pretty easy.
Yeah, we're trying to get through the preliminary, yep, get it all done.
And remind everybody, this is a major subdivision, so we have to go from initial sketch acceptance to preliminary, and then preliminary to final. And preliminary is supposed to be as close to final as you can kind of get, unless we get new information that might tweak it or change it, but not be too big. That's how we've been going through this process. I believe we already accepted for sketch a while back though, because the fundamentals of it were okay. So, from my notice, from my notes, there'll be, there'll be a formal memo issued by Rodenhausen Schall-Palidoro, you'll respond comments to that. Tad talked about needing monuments for some of the, some of the parcels to make sure we know that they're integral. When you come up tomorrow, you can speak with them about the, I think it was non-binding property, property boundaries, if I remember the language precisely. You can define that. Larry, you're going to look at the, how the setback changes now along West Dorsey from the approved plans to what's been submitted, and you're also going to stake the corners of buildings, so that we can come out and take a look. In terms of screening, I know why you guys are saying screening, but the screening you're talking about are the townhomes, which are residential in use. Well, I'm just, well, I think it'd be nice to always soften things, and I think it's a better sales for people who live there to have. When I see the Poltergeist, oh my God, I'm dating myself in every way. But when I see the Poltergeist neighborhoods, I call them, that, you know, everything's denuded and it's just houses, it always looks like it's kind of sad to live there, because it's going to take so long to get some landscaping up, because they leave it up to the individual property owners to do it. And I want to point out that when, a long time ago, on the board, when Anne and I started saying you have to show limits of tree disturbance for subdivisions, the Realtors started telling the applicant, the developers, the applicants, that it was easier to sell lots without houses or not, if they had some sort of, left some greenery, some screening, et cetera, you know, particularly if you're coming from, say, an urban environment where you're already living vertically. You know, when people were buying houses up here during COVID, they were looking for backyards with tree, basically. Because otherwise, if you were in a high-rise in Manhattan, you went to a park where everybody else was, so you had this much square space. So, retaining some trees and maintaining healthy landscaping is actually not only good for the environment, but it's also good for sales. I'm just pointing out that we don't really have anything in the code that requires us to do screening, because it's a residential use, and we don't screen residential uses from really anything. Want to add something there, Tad?
Just that we do have that setback requirement for no buildings and no parking. There is nothing that says that there has to be any landscaping in there.
Oh, that's true.
So, and I know that maintenance does require taking down trees at different times, and some have been taken down, maybe now is a good time in Phase 2A.
To add some back.
To supplement some of it.
I'll agree.
Not a lot, just.
No, no, I'll agree with you there on that, although that's phrase, yes. Thank you. That's a good explanation. So, we're not quite ready to move forward on this, but when do you guys want to adjourn this to? Would this be September 20th, maybe?
Yes.
You'll have a chance to meet tomorrow?
Yes.
And.
That'd be great.
You can, like I said, analyze the other issues. What we're truly talking about is going from sketch to preliminary acceptance.
Yep.
So, I think we can adjourn this to September 20th.
And, and once we're at preliminary, then we'll write all the easements, and that'll take, you know, weeks.
A while. And weeks for Victoria and Chris. They're both looking, sticking their heads going, no, no, no.
Right, and then they have to review them, right.
But this is, this is, this is an important part of the next step.
Yep.
If people want to see this developed, I think everybody does, and this is what has to happen, so. Anyway, make it a motion to adjourn the public hearing to September 20th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And we'll see you again in a second as well.
See you in a few.
The next item on the agenda is Hyde Park Quick Stop. So, this application, this is for a special use permit and site plan amendment. This is located at 4912 Albany Post Road, fairly close to Renaissance Rehabilitation. This is the, this was Mr. Delarm's Trophy World and the filling station that had no canopy over it. If you recall, we went through a long review process, because it was complicated, not by the planning board, I'm happy to say, but by outside agencies, because DOT wanted this and DEC wanted that. But we got through everything, as it turns out, we didn't have final sign-off from DOT, sort of we did, but not complete, nor did we have DEC's final sign-off. They got it the day that this would have expired, but they applied, made an application to amend the site plan before the expiration, which was timely, which is great, because the DEC's changes are actually all underground, so it won't change anything we reviewed. President asked if he needed to do a presentation tonight, I said, let me see if I can talk our way through it. Does anybody want to see a full presentation of the changes that are underneath the ground?
I do not.
Hearing none. If that's, if that's an okay explanation. We actually have a recommendation to waive the public hearing, but we do have to first send this over, because it's an amended application. I think we, we have to send this over to.
Planning, county planning.
County planning?
Yes.
Even though it won't, there's nothing exterior there for them, so they'll be rise to nothing in terms of the importance of the planning itself, so.
Comments? Comments last time.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
They had comments last time around county planning.
Oh, I'm sorry, they did, but I mean, these will, they, they may reach you the same comments, but they're going to be the comments, because those things haven't changed. We had already incorporated what we thought was important into county planning, for county planning comments.
Did we have to do this? Was this the majority plus?
No.
No.
No. No.
I think it was.
It was?
Yeah, we overrode the county's comment. We overrode the county's comment.
Not me for not remembering that. Not me for not remembering that.
Not too bad, huh?
Very good.
Not too bad. Nice job.
So, I wrote, I wrote a letter to county planning explaining why we overrode that? Wow. I'll have to revisit that letter, I see.
You can just change the date on it, honestly, so.
And it was, and it was one of your better letters, I think.
Thank you. I don't even remember writing it, sorry, so, at any rate.
It's been a little while.
It's been a little while. So, any comments from anybody present tonight?
Just, just nice job.
Very nice job.
Can't wait to see.
I have a comment, or more of a question. You got variances last year for, from the ZBA, and I want, it appears they have lapsed. Are you going back before, or what's the, do you know the status of those?
Well, if you're telling me they lapsed, I guess I would, would we have to go, what, what constitutes starting the project for the ZBA? Is it getting approval from the board? How's that work? Is it construction?
Which year you have to exercise your variance?
So, June 22nd, 2022, you got the variance, it's now September 23rd.
Yeah, so, they would be lapsed then, so what does that mean? Exercise the variance? Does that mean construction, building permit? Well, then, yeah, we would have to do something with that.
I think what you have to do is reapply for them. I will point out here, and I'm not an attorney, make sure you understand that, but I believe that unless new information has emerged, because they already granted it to you once, they would not be required, but it would be.
Highly unusual.
Highly unusual if they didn't grant it to you again. But you should start that process, because you can't. If I, if it needs variances, let me ask my question to you tonight then. If it needs variances, don't we need to put that as a condition in the reaffirmation, the site plan amendment of?
For.
Ultimately, wouldn't we need to do that?
Yeah, ultimately for approval, but not, you could still send it as is.
Oh, no, tonight, it's fine, it's just, you should start that process up.
We'll start it tomorrow, yeah.
I mean, we can issue, we could make it such that I could sign it before you get them, but then if I signed it before you got them, you didn't get them, it would be null and void, which makes sense.
I mean, we're in the process of amending it, so we're not really in a time crunch, I don't think, you know, so.
So they're going to amend, they're going to make an application to the ZBA for variances?
So Pete was just bringing up with, by reaffirming the NEG deck, they can go back to the ZBA without having to, because that has to be complied with again, okay? And I don't think there's anything significant that has to change in the NEG deck as a result of the variances. They're the same, they just lapsed, so.
Yes.
Okay.
And again, the variances lapsed, there really isn't, you could have tried to extend them at the time, but I don't know what the extension process is on variances. Usually, we, we haven't had a lot of instances where things got halted this long, but they're happening more and more often, I have to say, and it's, it's outside agencies.
Honestly, DEC was the, the dragging factor on this one, so, you know, unfortunately. Yeah, we'll, we'll reapply. I mean, that's, we have to go through the process.
I'm having a meeting with a bunch of elected officials, including a representative from the governor's office, and I actually got to say, if you're really just in economic development, you need to be hiring more people at these agencies, not starving them of funds, because honestly, there's not enough time for them to go through, seriously, and review.
It doesn't change the need for permits.
It's just hiring more people to get it through. And, and they were like, I don't understand what you mean, and I said, okay, let me wear another hat. I've been chair of 17 years on the Hyde Park Planning Board, and we sent things to you and we get nothing back. Sometimes, I think it was a solar array farm, within their 30 days.
It was installed, I think.
It was installed, and we got back the comments. That's a year and three months later, when they only had three days to respond. And I've said to them before, the DEC, but that's different people, but I've said, if you just send us back saying, here's our comment, we have no objection to you being lead agency, but we'll have more comments, then we know!
Then there's something coming, yeah, exactly.
But without that, I don't know that there's anything coming, by that, I mean, and the DEC is not going to sue us because we approved a solar array, a solar farm. That's something that actually they're approving of, but it's just, without, without more timely communication, it's very difficult for applicants. I know, because time is money, believe me.
Well, one of the biggest issues we had was every time we would resubmit to them after their comments, we'd get another series of something that had nothing to do with the previous comments. So it went from, let's look at stormwater, no, no additional comments, oh yeah, by the way, maybe we need to look at blanding turtles, even though they're not in this habitat. So it just kind of kept snowballing. We didn't get all the comments in one shot. That was, that was some of the difficulty.
I can tell you that that used to happen.
Don't feel bad, that's.
Well, you know, exactly, Pete, you know exactly what I'm talking about, so.
It's, the, the planning board here tries to avoid that, but there have been times when we overlook something and then see it and then go, oh, wait, we didn't mention this, and I know it's H-E-double-L for people, for people. But, at any rate, we have, if there's nothing else going on with this topic, and it seemed to be, then we have a resolution prepared, and I believe it's Mr. Grisio's.
First, we need to waive the public hearing?
Do we waive a public hearing right now? Okay, make it a motion to waive the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A note here that was recommended by Ms. Moss in advance, and now we have a resolution prepared. Thank you for reading that, here. John, this is yours.
Hyde Park Quick Stop Site Plan Amendment Resolution 2022-10B. Whereas on August 15th, the planning board granted the applicant Jatt Brothers' property LLC a special use permit and site plan approval, demolish an existing gas station and constructing new 35, 3,050 square foot gas station and convenience store, along with related site improvements of the property located at 4912 Albany Post Road in the Neighborhood Business District. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby reaffirms prior seeker determination of significance issued on June 15th, 2022. Be further resolved that the planning board hereby directs the Secretary of Planning Board to refer the amended site plan set to Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239-M of the general municipal law.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or extensions? Motion carries unanimously. It takes, they have three days in which to respond, as you know, so, as soon as we get the response back, then we'll schedule it to reapprove. But in the meantime, you should go ahead and start up the process with the ZBA. And I, I don't remember if they asked us for recommendations, but if they do, I'll just change the date on that letter, too, and get it out over there.
We appreciate it, thank you.
No, no, you're welcome. It's, I have to be honest with you, there are times when I drive by that site that I'm like, ah, ah!
Trust me, the owner is too.
Well, if, if nothing else, it's also, as I like to point out, but between Dunkin' Donuts, sort of, you come up the hill and enter town proper, and now this, as you're kind of entering the less rural areas, beginning to come into town proper, there's a similarity between the two buildings in terms of the stone table, et cetera. I keep going, this is really good for Hyde Park to have, you know, entering and exiting, or however you're going, that would have some similar areas to it, because, again, I've been going to Beacon a lot lately, and I got to see the Hyde Park Dunkin' Donuts that's down there, that's based on your design originally. When I go by, there's a Dunkin' Donuts that's on 9D, I believe, in?
Yeah, we did that one as well.
Well, I was told that they said, we want the Hyde Park version, and you were like, here, looked it out, so.
Pretty close.
That was pretty much our, our first day of real pride up here, I recall. Someone said they wanted a building in Hyde Park. I remember that, so. Anyway, good to see you, Brendan, as always, we'll see you in about a month.
Chairman, members.
And now we're back up to Bellafield. Wait, am I out of order?
No, you're good. You're just, you got it.
Yeah, Jeffrey Groves is after this one, sorry, sorry. They're out in the hall, wait, let me call them. Bellafield, do you want to come in now, or do you want to lose your place? I may not have everybody.
Lou's already here.
Lou's here.
Lou's like, yeah, I'm here, let's go.
Larry, do you guys want to go up next in the order, or if you're still waiting for people, let Lou go first? Okay.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda will be Jeffrey Groves Estates. This is a site plan amendment, three modifications based on some fencing and some other issues about the boundaries, some installation of rear yard patios with fencing, et cetera. So this is actually probably driven more by the consultants. Tad, you and Pete were the two out there, so, Mr. Sotero, do you guys want to provide your comments about how you want to see this move forward? I know we have, we got a memo from you on this, Pete.
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and start, and Ted will obviously chime in. So, the drawing, we asked for an amended site plan, which we got. There was some question based upon what I put in my memo about the plan will need to be refiled in Dutchess County Clerk's Office. I believe, and I think Tad's verified this, that the original site plan was filed in the clerk's office? So this will have to be refiled in the clerk's office. I don't know how they do it, but they can figure it out. Well, I know how you file it, but I don't think this is like a subdivision where it's an A drawing, or?
But this is tied to the subdivision, which I think is why this?
Yeah, so, I mean, they can figure that out with the clerk.
Okay.
So, now, well, what we don't know, we'll have to find out, is if there needs to be, and I don't know, if there's, if there's one on here, I had opened my plan, if there's a signature block for the chairman to sign, but, actually, I'm going to put that down. Check that. So, I think everybody knows that there's going to be a black chain link, chain link fence just to the north of the building, where there's the rock outcrop there. There's going to be a post and rail fence on the east side of the buildings, on the top of the slope, to kind of act as a barrier for wayward, like children, I guess, or anybody like walking up there, so they don't just walk over the edge of the rock cut. So, a couple of things in that area. So, it wasn't labeled on the plan where the fence was, was supposed to be black, so that's, so we want that to be done. I also asked that the fence on the north side, the one that's adjacent to the property line, where there was some encroachment, that that be staked in the field prior to putting it in, so that Tad and I could just take a look and make sure it's where we want it. I don't know that we want it all the way back by the property line. I would like it as close to the rock cut, you know, as possible, without it being, you know, up and down, and then here I am, using the hands again, up and down, up and down, up and down, so that, you know, we could just, you know, we'll figure it out in the field, where's the best spot for it. And then, also, the post and rail fence on the east side, I'd like for that to be extended to meet the chain link fence, so they intersect. There was two vinyl, vinyl, privacy fence details on the map. One, one is meant for the vinyl fence, but then the other one, the other one shows the patio area, so I think just, you know, the detail needs to be changed, the name, the name of the detail. And then, so now, just so, just so I understand it, so there's going to be a black chain link fence at the end of the patios with a vinyl privacy fence in between units?
There'll be a privacy fence in between, yes, there'll be a privacy fence in between units to give some privacy between the two.
Yeah, no, no, that, that's fine. Because I thought at one time, back when the first map came in, and maybe I was wrong, but I thought the vinyl fence was also out, out at the end of the pad. I mean, you know, I don't care, you know, it's fine. I don't, I don't think the board.
You know, the topo doesn't lend itself to putting a fence there at the edge of the buildings, at least the second building closest to that ledge, there's a rock right up against it, and so, you know, the natural barrier.
So you're going to put, so there's going to be like a four-foot-high chain link fence at the end of the concrete patio, where, wherever that the rock cut is? That's what it shows on the map, so.
Well, then I have to confirm that, because I'm not so sure there is a chain link fence at the end of the patio.
Well, that's, that's what we were confused at, because we thought the vinyl fence was where the patios were, and, but it's showing chain link, there's a privacy fence there, too.
Okay. The map gets a little confusing.
So, you know, the patios, so the patio's here, and then, so this is, you know, the rock cut, so it shows a black chain link fence here, okay, along, you know, the rock cut, and then in between, you know, the units, there'd be, you know, the vinyl privacy.
Right.
So you just need to get with Brian and make sure that you're on the same page, that's all.
I mean, honestly, aesthetically, it seems strange, too, to combine those two fences.
Right. The, the privacy fence, I know we want, I'm not so sure about that chain link at the end. You know, we, yeah, I don't think it'll lend itself to that either, because it's just a natural barrier there.
I had asked Pete to just weigh in and say that there wasn't any significant change in stormwater, because the patios weren't part of the approval, I believe, process.
Right, right.
But it's pretty impervious back there, anyway.
Yeah, but we put in a, but we put in a, a current frame along the edge.
I just want, again, I just want the engineering to make sure that it's all okay.
So then, just, you know, a couple other, a couple other highlights. So, down at the, where the pump, pump station is, and I'm going to be up here, you know, tomorrow, so maybe I'll take a ride up, but did the pump station generator pad get bigger than what was on the original plan because of design work afterwards?
I, I don't think so, I think it was always that.
Because it looks, if you look at the plan, it looks, it looks, it looks, looks weird. And I asked Brian in the, in the memo to number one, make sure that the box culvert that's shown on his drawing is the as-built box culvert, the one that's actually in there now.
Right.
Because he maybe just shown the one on the original design plans, and I think it may have shifted a little bit. But it also looks to me that the generator pad is very close to the end of the box culvert. And if I remember right, there's, there's quite like a slope that goes from, obviously, the bottom of the stream up to where the generator is, and they seem on, you know, a plan view, that they're very close together, so.
Yeah, I was up today, I did not notice that, you know, overhang, I guess is what you're describing.
Right, yeah. Maybe it's not.
It's, it's not like that, but we can, you know, I can clarify that for you.
I'm going to be up here tomorrow, I was going to take, like, a ride up, just take, you know.
That'll be great.
So, generator pad. So around, around the generator, they're showing a fence, I just said, label it like black, I don't even know if it's already in.
Uh, no, I don't, no, I don't think it is.
Yeah, you'll probably have the fence guy there, obviously, all at one shot, so. So we want, so we want that to be black. Screening is noted, but I didn't see anything as to what was going to be there. Tad, that's something that Tad had mentioned, too, I mean.
Do you mean where the sign location has been added?
Well, the monument sign is, well, that's, that's like another thing. The monument sign is shown within the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority.
The easement.
Easement, so I just asked, you should go talk to them and make sure that they're okay with it.
And we might move it.
And we would need something from them, but.
After I heard the experience you had with the water tower, I said, I better not ask.
So as far as, you know, the screening goes, I, I mean, I, I, I mean, I don't, that's really up to the planning board, you know, was there going to be any there?
I believe there is, yeah, I think that, you asked for that commitment last time, but.
Was that on the, and again, I don't have the original set, but maybe that was on the original set, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I thought it was.
Screening around the generator? All right, so let's just check. I'll be up here, like, tomorrow, maybe, maybe Tad and I can look at the original set, and maybe there was already some landscaping or something around there.
You know, the thing about this one is, when the longest-serving two up here, Ann and I were, you know, appointed, if you recall, Jeffrey Groves had already, was, it had been approved, and they changed the lines on the individual lot lines. This is right after Don left.
Yeah.
It was approved when he was still chair, so it's, I don't remember, Ann and I were basically told, don't look at it too much, don't dig in too much, because it's already approved once. So I don't really know all the details from the original on that, but I know that under the prior code, which this was approved under prior code, but it met the current code, screening was, I'm not sure how much was required around generators, so, but it's definitely a nice thing. However, we also know that you can't screen too much, you have to keep some distance.
No, I think it was just something, you know, like low or something to break it up a little bit.
Bushes and shrubs, but I mean, I will say, this, this is one of the most attractive buildings surrounding that sewage, that wastewater treatment facility that we have around. I go by Hyde Park ledges and think, oy vey, we should have had something like you have there, but at any rate, we were a little bit sand on that one.
I guess, I guess the only other thing that, and I, and, you know, I picked this up, and evidently, I must have missed it the first time around, and again, I have to talk to Brian, but it seems like we were missing a stormwater easement on, on the north, south, east of, you know, the culvert, at the end of the culvert, because it, because the, because the culvert extends past the town right away, that the town will, like, accept at some point when the road's dedicated. So there needs to be a stormwater easement that covers the end, the end of the culvert.
I believe, I believe it's like stormwater easement 3, but.
Well, it could have been, so I, so I could be missing it, so maybe you and I and Brian and Tad just need to have a quick discussion on that.
I would find it surprising that Mr. Raplansky missed an easement.
Well, could have been like me, too, you know? So anyway, so, why don't we, why don't, you know, we check, I, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, we didn't miss it, because then that requires Dalbo and blah, 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 and we don't have to, I mean, not, nothing against Mike.
I saw your comment, I, I think I have it, if I have it, I'll send it to you in the morning.
Let's just, let's just double check. So that was basically, those were, you know, the summaries, so the fencing we want to look at before they put it in. You're going to, you're going to double-check on the black chain link at the ends of the patios?
Yes.
Okay. And then I don't know if anybody else has anything.
Well, first, let me just summarize what you said, this, the site plan will need to be refiled in the Dutchess County Clerk's Office. Make sure, check to see if there's a signature block there for both the owner and the chair or chair representative to sign. The chain link fence, you want to make sure it's labeled as black, and you want it to actually meet the post and rail fence. Stake the fence location, so you and Tad can actually go through and make sure you know where it's going to be, so that you can analyze the location and make sure that's where you think it's the best location. And then the, make sure that the sign that's proposed, the monument sign, it's going to stand the DCWWA easement, that they agree or relocate it. Those are my highlights from it. Ms. Moss, do you have any other, Tad, do you have any other comments?
Ted, Ted, you had some.
These were pretty, you know, detailed.
Well, I put down something here that Ted had in an email comment about calculations for impervious coverage, and I wasn't quite sure what that is, but I'm sure she'll cover.
I, I don't think that's an issue, but I think we just needed to check to make sure that the impervious coverage was similar and didn't exceed the, whatever the standards are, but those townhouse lots go back pretty far, so I think it's kind of okay.
The patios, what you're talking about is the patios?
Yeah, yeah, but the, the other thing that I'm somewhat cautious about is that there's that drainage easement from the pond down to the culvert under the town road, and that that drainage easement, that drainage path is being changed, and there is a relatively sharp turn in the direction of the water flow, and I didn't see a detail for armoring for the side of the swale. I don't know if it needs any, because I don't know how much water flows through there, I don't think it's a whole lot, but that was something that I was going to talk to that I was going to talk to Pete about.
Okay.
There should be, and Lou can double-check, you know, with Brian.
But there, there was, there was a detail on the original Daniels Way plans that had the stone armoring at the culvert. So now whether, there needs to be like another detail for the fact that they extended it further, I don't know. That's, we'll talk about that, but there may need to be something else there. Just to detail, you know, the stone a little bit better, but it's not a big deal.
If you tell me what time you're going to be there, I might have someone, you know, walk it so you can get the comments better.
Well, if I get, if you can give me your phone number, I can go text you when we're, like, winding up here.
Okay, great.
How's that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Some likely more discussion is ahead. But I did get that Tad asked for a new calculation for the percentage of impervious for the whole site because of the addition of the patios. But I agree, Tad, I don't think it's going to change anything. The lots are pretty long, indeed. And it's a big site.
Yeah.
But you should have that as a percentage in case they ever want to add any more development to see what the impervious is. Any legal comments?
No further comments at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Veat?
No comment.
Mr. Waters?
No comment.
Ms. Wasser?
No comments.
Ms. Dexter?
No.
Mr. Oliver?
No comment.
Mr. Garcia?
Uh, no.
We're a very quiet board tonight. At any rate, I've summarized for you the six points that I think are takeaways from this. So what we'll wait to do is, once you guys work through what you still think needs to be on and doesn't need to be on, et cetera, then we could go ahead and schedule this for an actual public hearing, because this will be an amendment, site plan amendment.
Yeah.
And I believe you said that the plans need to be labeled site plan amendment, as opposed to site plan, Pete?
Is it set to go to county?
Indeed it does.
Is that because the site plan was a part of the file map?
You're admitting the site plan. Anytime that we have changed the site plan, I have to refer it back to county planning. I don't think you're going to hit a lot of comments.
No.
We just did for the previous.
Oh, referring back to county planning. No, I thought you meant to file it.
You're talking about the filing of the map.
No, I thought you about filing.
So as I understand it, from what Ted, because I think this has to do with the removal of the lots that you dissolved, and then the reappearance of the lots, are we separating?
No, no.
What was this?
No, because, because we did, because we did Daniels Way separate, and then Lou, and Lou undid Blair, and then we redid Blair. But Daniels was separate, so there was, there was a certain number of drawings that were filed in the Dutchess County Clerk's office. And I think, and Tad believes also, that the site plan that we're looking at here was one of the drawings that was filed. Now, we have to double-check that. But if it was filed with the original set, then this just needs to be refiled. And I think it's a really simple process to just file, because it doesn't involve any kind of property. So I think it's really simple, but I don't know that it requires your signature, but we'll find that out.
Okay, it almost is like they would open up a plan set and substitute a sheet out like we would at times.
Something like that.
Okay.
Something like that.
Okay. Then we'll wait to hear back from you guys as to when to schedule this back on the agenda. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope you're staying local instead of driving all the way back.
No, I'm staying local.
Okay, sorry.
The, the game isn't complete yet.
Tell, tell him that. He's right behind you.
Bring him back up and get him done.
Lou, can you give me your, your number?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Bellafield Phase 2A for the site plan approval. The elements are seeking approval to basically develop a very small portion, which would be 12 townhouses and the entry sign barn. There'll also be some utilities. It's not just those two. There'll also be utilities laid in, et cetera. At our last meeting, Mr. Avolazze was not able to be here, but I think we heard positive comments from all those present. It wasn't a full meeting. All the board members weren't here, so I think they're looking to see if they can hear something similar back tonight. Let me trade over to you gentlemen.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We submitted the site plan set for Phase 2A two, two weeks ago. It included the elevation, actually did not include the elevation. That was one of the things that was requested. So, and then there were other things. Thank you, Tad, for jumping on it, and Cynthia and Pete and everybody. And we hit the revisions, and we turned it around last week. And that's what you see there. We've subsequently had a, an online call with, with Rob yesterday and the whole team here. And we further revised that elevation that's in your packet, and we have it here. So.
Thank you for your graciousness in meeting. And thank you, Rob, for taking the time to meet with us.
So you want to hand that out?
Hi, Mayor.
Yeah.
Oh, by the way, Pete, were you going to look at recalculating the numbers for the road bond for Dorsey?
Oh, good point. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew.
Did you guys figure out what you're doing about stormwater in terms of rainwater coming down on the, that was, that was an issue Mr. Waters was addressing about sometimes they're done internally?
Yes, yes, we did. Yes, we did. And it, it shows on this elevation, and I'll let Mike speak to that.
It shows to architects who understand how to read these elevations. Trust me, I don't see anything.
Okay.
That's why I asked.
All right, let me, let me just go through the site plan stuff. Pretty much the same, just the drawings are cleaned up. I didn't, I don't have in here the grading plan, the lighting plan. The lighting plan was updated. Landscape plan was updated. So all those things, I think, are all going in the right direction.
Landscaping was definitely beefed up.
Yep, yep, that was beefed up. Tom and I did look at building 1800, which is part of this application, the entry barn. And we're not going to break the wall here. The initial thought was to break it, so a view corridor could go through to a display area. But once the tractor and the pickup truck are in there, they're, they're going to be in there. We're not going to take them out.
Are you losing the patio, the steps down the patio that was around it?
Yes, the patio's gone. Yep.
Is it still accessible to visitors?
Uh, it won't be. It's just a visual thing.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything you want to add, Tom?
No.
No.
Well, remember, the barn is going to have a lot of glazing on the
Yes.
bottoms, so you'll be able to see inside it, to see the historic implements that are stored there.
Yep, yep, there it is, right there. This is, you've seen this before.
Yep.
Matches what we did in Phase 2. So what, what I'll do, and then, then I'll let, let Mike go through, the, these remain the same. These aren't changed, because they can't be changed like that. The elevation, we're able to respond to the questions that were picked up yesterday. Those questions included, what are you doing with the stormwater that runs off the roof? So there's a detail, you know, a Yankee box gutter, so they aren't hanging off the side, but they'll be built into the eve. And Rob knows what that is, and we, we showed him what the detail is. The gutters, the downspouts that go down, they will be on the outside, so they'll transition in and then come out into a scupper and then, and then go down. On that plan, they are labeled, very hard to see them, but they are on there. The other thing that we addressed was this blank wall.
I see him.
Oh, now I see it. Sorry. Yeah.
I see.
Yeah, yeah. So these windows were added, and, and these windows were added. Previously, there were no windows. So now we, one, two, three, four, five, six windows are added.
I appreciate this. I think everybody else will too, when they get a chance to speak, but this is overcoming the featureless blank void that Mr. Waters referred to. So it looks great.
The other thing we did, and Rob suggested, is to help bring scale to the building, we, we brought in the landscaping. So you can see that. And any questions you have for us?
Let me start with our consultants. Any comments, Ms. Francis?
So I think in general, it's looking great. I think you took a lot of the planning board's comments to heart. I see that the stone matches the hotel now, because it was different in the simulation. The only thing I'm trying to recall, the roof, wasn't it metal seam originally? Is this now shingle? And, and is there a reason for the change? I thought the metal roof looked good, but I don't know if, Rob, you thought architecturally, or the planning board thought architecturally, but that just seemed to be a change, that.
Yeah, original was the metal roof.
The metal, yeah.
And then once we changed the pick, and we made a steepered roof, then we changed to the shingles.
Okay. So that's the one thing I want to point out, just to bring it to your attention. But that's it. Like I said, I think you really went in a great direction with this. So thank you.
Oh, thank you. That was it. Tad, any comments? Tad, Pete?
I'm not going to go over all. We didn't, you know, a lot of the erosion control ones, we can go over in our meeting, you know, tomorrow. Not a big deal. I just want to make sure that, you know, as we're working out all, you know, the notes and the details for the Phase 2 development set, that all those notes carry over to each individual phase as, you know, we move along, or as, you know, you move along. And then I would like on, on this set of drawings and every future phase drawing, a nice bold note referencing, you know, the SWIP. In this case, the approved SWIP for Phase 2 dated blank, you know, approved by the town on blank. And so this way, you know, the contractor's aware of that. So just a couple things. I, I looked at the site plan. The roundabout, is that going to be permanent? It's labeled as temporary?
Yeah. I think we're likely to, to keep it permanent. Don't know for sure. But the idea is it would be a kind of a gateway into the.
No, I think it'd be nice. I mean, so a couple things on that. I'm going to, you know, I don't know if, like, Passaro has like a transportation, you know, division or whatever. But I, you know, I was going to have somebody from CPL's Transportation just take a quick look at, you know, the geometrics and the type of vehicles that would go around it and.
Okay, I believe we added that
Why?
in the most recent plans in the middle.
Yeah, I didn't look at them, because they came in late, and I had already left for vacation. I took the old set of plans.
Yeah, yeah, so it's in.
So we can look at that tomorrow, too.
Yep, we'll look at it tomorrow.
We'll look at that tomorrow. And so as far as those, I saw a couple of things on sidewalks that I thought the sidewalk should be extended from over by the townhomes to the, the bus stop area, because I'm sure, you know, over, over time, you'll have, you'll, you'll have kids walking to the bus stop.
We don't have the bus stop area anymore.
That was on, you know, the latest plans?
Yeah, it was taken off, because it didn't technically conform, you know, within the setback. You can't have parking in the 150 setback.
Well, that took care of that comment. That was it.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, you know, my other one was, you know, the sidewalk should be like extended to the other side of the roundabout to like continue
Okay.
you know, in the future phases. So, you know, the rest of my stuff was just like minor stuff.
Yeah, I did see that. Thank you for getting that to us. You sent it like Sunday night.
Hey.
So appreciate it.
Well, I don't, yeah, well, that's all right. So the generators, that's the last thing. And electrical wasn't one of my strong suits when I was taking my PE test. That's why we have Don here. But, so there's, there's like a generator shown for each building.
Yeah.
So how does that like work? Does there have to be a central utility room for the, each like building where the generator powers?
And, and the generator is not shown as being that big.
Because you can't, because you can't go power each individual unit, right?
I, I thought about it a little bit when I read your memo.
That was good, right? That was good.
Yeah, it was good, really good. I'm rubbing off on you. As soon as you clean up those violations in your garage at home. Yeah, each unit's going to have its own transfer switch, which is going to talk to one generator.
No, actually, we want to do the one building to have the one transfer switch, rather than each unit.
So they'll.
We can't, wait, we can't hear.
I'm sorry.
The microphone. We're going to have a one generator for one building. So, so it's going to have a one transfer switch, not each unit. It's going to have, each building's going to have a one transfer switch.
So you're going to switch the load of the whole building?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so the HOA then would pay the, the electric bill.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, that would make sense.
So it's not going to be individually metered?
No, no, no.
So each unit
Yeah.
pays into the homeowners.
Correct, yeah.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah.
Whoa.
So, but wait, what site, the generator to run just a house my size is big. It's not on a six-by-six concrete pad like you have it labeled. So how's that one generator going to operate four units?
We're going to have a
Refrigerators in one place?
MEP engineer obviously calculate the whole thing. I mean, I'm looking at maybe like 80 KW.
But you have elevators in these buildings.
Right, yeah. But elevators, it's going to be the, the least my worries. I mean, you got the air conditioners, you got all the other stuff there. So, I mean, we're going to, we're going to do the proper load calculation, obviously, before we go ahead and then stack into the generator.
You're showing six-foot by six-foot concrete pads for generator. That's not enough, big enough generator to power my house.
Yeah, it's going to be more than.
They haven't sized it yet. That's just, that's an engineer just showing.
Just the space over there.
For our purposes, because
I know.
I'm not an engineer and don't really care about the load or anything else. I'm talking, thinking about aesthetics.
No, I, no, I have, actually, I have a development that I have 100 homes there, and I have a generator. It's like I have them on eight-by-eight for pad. It's not huge. It's tall, but it's not too big and wide.
You don't worry about people living there, just looking at their big old generators sitting there?
So what we did was that, actually, we did a really nice job. I can send the pictures. I mean, we fenced it, and then we put the, like, nice green giants around it. And we have a little access there, so it's pretty nicely.
Big green giant.
Yeah, yeah.
So each house would be 200 amps, so four would be, you know.
Yeah, I mean, 200 amps. So if you, if you go like 20 KW, like, let's say 200 in service, right? I mean, 80K is the, the top, right? I mean, I was thinking like between 65 to 80 somewhere. Again, I'm not a mechanical engineer, but just doing the like drainage analysis, I mean, it should be enough.
I agree.
You know, and elevator only, when it kicks off, that's when it draws the more electricity. I mean, doesn't, you know, takes much. And here, we're looking to do the more like hydraulic generators, not the electric generators. So hydraulic generators doesn't use that much load than.
Elevator.
Elevator.
Huh?[1597.16]
Elevator.
Not hydraulic.
Yeah, hydraulic elevator, yeah.
I know what he meant.
Yep.
Yeah.
Anything else, Pete?
No.
Yes.
We'll, we'll get those comments addressed, Pete, and resubmit.
So when you asked for comments, I thought you meant this particular sheet.
Oh, no.
So I will have comments. I was on vacation when the plan revised came on.
You weren't really on vacation, I know. I talked to you too many times. I got too much stuff out of you, so...
So I will get you something. Thank you.
But thank you. Yeah, I didn't mean just... Hi, surprise. Make comments now. Cassandra, any comments?
Yeah, so tonight, we did draft a resolution to refer this back, the site plan back to county planning. We did add a courtesy referral to the Roosevelt Fire Department, and that is because of the emergency access vehicles with the roundabout change.
Thank you. It has to go to both districts.
Okay, so we got that fair view.
Just remember that they, even though the roundabout is not in the Fairview area, just remember that they both respond.
They back each other.
They back each other up. So we should have...
I'm going to add that to my resolution.
Yeah. Okay. Board, let's start from my interior, right. Ms. Dexter, any comments? Mr. Oliver?
I appreciate the work that you put in here, trying to meet, you know, our town's design ideas and, and our board's ideas. And I think you're going in the right direction. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Grisby?
No comments. I mean, it looks great.
Thank you. Ms. Wasser?
I echo the comments that were just made. I, I know this is not what you originally presented and what you had in your mind, but I think everyone is happy and I appreciate the design. And I want to thank my colleague, Rob, for stepping up on behalf of the board to put in extra time to get it done.
Thank you. He was very helpful yesterday.
He's good.
He is.
Mr. Waters, hero of the day?
Yes, I, I, just the north and south elevation, if you can just get the dimensions on that, they're, they're still missing from that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I believe it's 48 feet, just so the...
Forty, yeah, 47, two, yeah, and it was 33, yeah.
Yeah.
We rushed this today because, you know, Matthew did a great job.
No, I understand. Just so the next iteration, it has it. Yeah, that's no problem. Yep, yep. So, no, it looks, looks great. Thank you.
Can you tell, can you walk us through what changes you made to the railing?
Didn't make any changes to the railing because Mike actually wanted to keep it very simple and, you know, no, no sense reinventing the wheel. So we discussed that. We also discussed, the thing that doesn't appear here is, we had, I, I had thought possibly breaking up that roof line a little bit with a shed up there, but you really, it's so high up that you really don't see it. And then it would be hard because where is the light coming from the south side? So, so, you know, and also the space up there has a lot of light. So, so, you know, we, we took that off the plate, too. But everything, like just adding the windows to those spaces, you know?
Oh, it's a big difference.
Adding things like that. I, and I think we did talk about fireplace. I mean, that was something that we did talk about that you don't see. I believe there's going to be something maybe on the exterior, outside?
Yeah, we are, we are, we are planning to have something on the terrace.
On the terrace, yeah.
Outdoor fireplace there.
Yeah, to take advantage of that because, you know, and then that was basically it. And then the top that looks like a cantilever, but, you know, we know that that's a, you know, a pergola, you know, type of idea.
It does look like a cantilever, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Which would greatly add to the expense.
Yes, yeah.
It's pretty cool, actually. I, I...
It's, it's, it looks great from this, from this angle. It looks really, really nice and clean and linear. And I have to add, I saw your email about adding dormers and I thought, I don't think, this, this is so clean up top. I don't think it really needs it.
Yeah, yeah.
You also have the, the external parts of the chimneys showing, which also helps break up, you know, everything as well so that it doesn't have a big monotonous look by any means.
Yep. And, and that was the other thing, is the cricket just behind the fireplace just needs to be in there.
Yeah, it's going to be on Architectural Designs once we're going to have a...
Yeah, there, there's a little cricket up in here behind the fireplaces. Cricket is just to shed the water from the chimney to the wall, you know, in, in the roof so that you don't get a snow load in there.
Right.
You know, but, but, you know, we'll, visually, you'll, well, I don't even know if you'll see it because it's in the center of the building and you're looking up 40 feet. So you probably won't see it.
Actually, you, you did see a little, you got to see a little angle there.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, yep. So that's it. That was, that's all I had.
Thank you. And I, I also want to say that we appreciate your willingness to work with the planning board and particularly specific planning board members who have very good eyes on stuff. And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah.
Mr. Veeth, official comments?
Because it's such a tall building, I always had a little concern with the metal roof. So I'm really glad to see you put the shingles on. Just that snow comes off awful quick.
Thank you.
But other than that, great. Good job. Thank you.
And I don't really have any other comments either because I wasn't surprised that you were coming back to us because, not agree with your last time, but you didn't hear any negative, anything from the board. And honestly, as I've said this before, this is such a simple portion of the overall site plan that this should be easy now that we know where we're going to get through. So what we'll do is put this on for the agenda for next week. And I think the plans are ready to circulate so we can, I mean, not next week, next meeting, so it can circulate to county planning as well as to, well, I'm sorry, we're already circulating with our resolution now. You're just changing. But we can set a public hearing for October 4th, so give county planning time to respond. I think if we hear any public comments, I hope that they'll be, how beautiful this looks. So, who has this resolution?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution to refer the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development and the Roosevelt Fire District and Fairview Fire District. Bellafield Final Development Plan, Phase 2, Site Plan Phase 2A, September 6, 2023, Resolution 2022-44. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, directs its secretary to refer the project to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239M of the General Municipal Law, and, two, directs its secretary to refer the project to the Roosevelt Fire District and Fairview Fire District.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Yes?
The public hearing is scheduled for...
Make it a motion to set a public hearing for October 4th.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Gotcha.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience and staying so late. And Mr. McCollum, always good to see you back there when you're being silent, though. Mr. Mulroy, good to see you guys as well.
The next item on the agenda appears to be a site plan waiver.
The first one is for Kenneth Turo, if I'm pronouncing that last name correctly. Actually, Mr. Turo, there's a person with the same last name who was the Los Angeles Times film critic for about 40 years, but I think this is him. This is a request for a site plan waiver for approval of roof-mounted photovoltaic panels or solar system. This is One Ravine Rev, which is in the SAS, the statewide area of scenic, wait, scenic area of statewide significance, but this is not directly visible from the river or either one of the historic sites. And we have the recommendation from Ms. Moss. Anyone have any questions?
No.
Mr. Waters, this is yours.
Kenneth Turo, One Ravine Road, September 6, 2023, Resolution 2023-50. Whereas, a request for the site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Kenneth Turo to install roof-mounted photovoltaic panels on the existing single-family home. And whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the request for a waiver of site plan received by the Planning Department on August 25, 2023, and in the building permit application dated August 17, 2023.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any names or extensions? The motion carries. Next item on the agenda is another site plan waiver request. This is also residential, residential application located at 39 Garden Street. It's to approve a sunroom into a bathroom, which I gather is on the main floor. We, it's also in the scenic area statewide significance, but it is also not visible from either one of the historic sites directly or from the river. It is somewhat visible from an historic building, but it's, that's, it doesn't, it's, the building, the structure is there, just requires a building permit. So it's going to churn, it'll change. Anyone have any questions?
No.
Then I believe this is Ms. Dexter's.
Yes. Resolution number 2023-51. Whereas, a request for site plan waivers have been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Stephen and Karen Welch for converting their existing glass sunroom into a laundry room and half bath on the property associated with a single-family home, requiring a building permit. And whereas, whereas, now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the Building Department, August 28, 2023, and per the request to the Planning Board dated September 5, 2023.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names or extensions? The motion carries unanimously. I am refused from the final application, so I'm going to leave the dais and head home. And I appreciate my colleagues, as always, for your great work tonight, great comments. And we'll see you in two weeks. And this time, I should have some better nut bread.
Great work together next time as well.
Oh.
I, I can't sign that.
Never mind, never mind.
Anne, do you need me, do you need me for the extension or it's, is it, in terms of that extension, do you need us here for that or it's just perform?
I don't believe so. I mean, in three minutes, we'll find out.
Okay. I'm just checking. Pete's carrying my box.
Oh, no. The next item on the agenda is...
Because they're big boxes.
Oh, so good. So the next item on the agenda is a key construction office, storage units. They're here for an extension of their time to satisfy the conditions. They are getting, very close to getting the DEC approvals. This is just to ensure that they don't expire before they get all that. I'm just going to ask if my colleagues have any questions about this application.
No.
No? Who has this?
I do.
Resolution granting two 90-day extensions of time to satisfy conditions of approval, key construction warehouses, storage units. Resolution number 2020-30E. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant two 90-day extension of time to satisfy the conditions of the site plan approval, two and including March 10, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I abstain. I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yep.
Gotcha. Okay. We have one extension, Mr. Veeth.
Yes.
And one accent with Tori. Yeah, Victoria.
Yes.
All right. Do, can I get a motion to adjourn? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the, to the Town of Hyde Park, uh, Town Board for giving us the ability to broadcast this. And thank you very much to our, our engineer in the back who is making sure that we're going out over the airwaves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Who won the card? I said aye.
Not me.